Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, November 19th Regular City Council Meeting. With that, D. Stiles Elliott, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delara.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
For our community announcements tonight, we first of all are continuing with the residential leaf collection, and collection will be on Military Hill, which is the northwest quadrant from Wednesday through Friday of this week, and then on College Hill, which is the northeast quadrant on November 25th, 26th, and 27th. To learn more about Pullman's annual residential leaf collection program, visit pullman-wa.gov/leaves. For holiday closures, Pullman City Hall and City Administrative Offices will be closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday, November 28th, and Native American Heritage Day on Friday, November 29th. Regular hours will resume on Monday, December 2nd. The emergency services will remain available. For Neil Public Library, Neil Public Library early closure will be 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 27th, and it will be closed through the weekend for the holiday. Normal hours resume on Monday, December 2nd. And for Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Center and Pullman Aquatics Centers will close at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 27th, and be closed through Friday. For the holiday regular program hours resume on Saturday, November 30th. And if you're looking for something to do for the whole family this winter, come swim at the Pullman Aquatics and Fitness Center. Daily, monthly, quarterly, and six months passes are available. For more information, go to pullman-wa.gov/swim. The next item on our agenda is non-agenda related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action on the agenda. At this time, so the agenda items for this comments is not to exceed 30 minutes. In total, comments are to be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body. No comment should be directed to an individual council member. With that, is there anyone who would like to provide community comments? If so, please come up to the microphone, and you'll have two minutes. And when you're done, if you could sign in, sign your name at the back table just so that we get your spelling right in the minutes. With that?
Great. Thanks for this opportunity. I am Tom Thompson. I live at 415 Southeast Crestview. I've been a resident here in Pullman for 41 years. Been here for 44 years on the Palouse. I went to U of I and both WSU, and I just wanted to briefly make a comment here about the Israel-Gaza resolution. Having known hundreds of foreign internationals from around the world here during my stay, both working at Schweitzer Engineering and working at WSU's classified staff, I've made many friends over the years, many nationalities, many different viewpoints, and ideas as far as how the world should work. And I think in light of this situation, number one, it doesn't pertain to Pullman, the city of Pullman. It doesn't pertain to the city council and your duties. Your duties should be focused on helping make sure that Pullman operates smoothly for the citizens, the roads are plowed, the streets are paved, and we have safety and protection. Now, having said that, my reason for this is that, as I mentioned, many different viewpoints, and I can only see whether, you know, it doesn't matter if I wrote the resolution or, you know, Billy Bob out there someplace, it doesn't matter. A resolution like this is only going to bring division and ill will in our community. It will not bring us together, and we need to focus on coming together. We've had a contentious election. I think it's time to leave the politics aside and focus on making this a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Chelsea Whitney, and I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Pullman Association. And I'm going to...
So if you can give, hand else there, and then, and the clerk will get them around everybody. Thank you.
I am here to just give a little update on our trick-or-treat and our recent pub crawl that we held through the Downtown Pullman Association. You'll get flyers with these numbers, but we had over 600 people at our downtown trick-or-treat this year, which was really fantastic. I was a little nervous with the construction, if people would still be willing to come down, and they absolutely were. Last year, we had, I would say, our chief complaint last year was that the sidewalks were narrow and overcrowded, and we had zero of those complaints this year, even with some of the narrow walkways. People said the construction was a little tricky, but the new sidewalks were beautiful and wide, and really enjoyed coming downtown. We also had over 100 pounds of candy donated by the Inter-Fraternal Council at WSU, so that was a great sponsor this year. And we were able to help businesses that may have not been able to participate with the pressure of buying, it takes a lot of candy to do the trick-or-treat. We just finished our cement mixer pub crawl last weekend. Thank you. I know some of you guys were able to come downtown and enjoy that with us. We got a quote from Etsy Bravo saying it was the best downtown event they've ever been a part of. And we, I hoped to sell 40 tickets. We sold 95, and then we had 25 people show up on the day of to try to buy tickets. So it was very well attended, and our next one will be in February. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hi. I'm Judy Cold. I'm president of Downtown Association. I just wanted to thank the council for last week in listening to our requests. I want to add a clarification. We do not necessarily need any financial contribution. It can be in-kind, it can be any sort of support. We already have from you all a memorandum of support that talks generally about your support of DPA. So when you're doing whatever you need to do with your budget magic, I trust that you guys will come up with something, but feel no pressure, we can work with whatever you guys can do for us. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. My name's Rick Grunwald. I live at 1715 Northwest Lamont Street. Been a Pullman resident for, since 1965, and loved it here. I also, Mr. Thompson talked about the proposed possible resolution for a ceasefire. I'm in opposition to that, same reasons that I heard Mr. Thompson speak, so I won't repeat him. But I would also like to thank the council and for all your work downtown. I loved driving through Main Street. I was, the night before, I think, I forget what night it was, but it just opened up, and it's just great to see the work that's been done there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Brent Carper. I live on Sunnyside Hill, also about downtown. So first of all, just want to acknowledge, I've, over the last few months, several months, I've met with several of you about different issues in Pullman, and it's been really great. Every time I've asked to meet, where should we meet, where should we go, every time you've picked downtown, let's meet for coffee downtown, let's have lunch downtown, let's have a beer downtown. And so I just want to acknowledge that. That's fantastic leadership. There's a lot of talk about supporting Pullman, but I just want to acknowledge that you guys are a walk in the block when you do it as well. So thanks for that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the whole sidewalk use in downtown. Last meeting, I was a little concerned when I heard the discussion on council, and the Community Development Director asked you kind of four things to weigh in on, and I know you're going to discuss this more maybe at a future meeting or next meeting. But first, full disclosure, I serve on your planning commission, so I spend probably a stupid amount of time thinking about sidewalks compared to most people. But at your last meeting, you kind of jumped, in my mind, you jumped immediately to minimum sidewalks, and what's the code and restrictions for minimum sidewalks? And you were talking about giving up sidewalks and leaving just four or five feet, which are the absolute minimums under the law. And I want you to maybe consider stepping back from that. The primary purpose of the sidewalk down there is mobility and people being down there and circulating. The last thing we want to do is create choke points, and if you go down to the minimums, it's going to be choke points. So please consider starting at like 50%. If a particular business needs a little bit more, there's the variance process with the Board of Adjustment, and they can, they can look at unique things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment? Please.
Hi there. My name is Lita Zachariason, and I'm a constituent from Pullman. I'm also a lifelong member of Community Congressional UCC. And, you know, I was like unsure if I wanted to talk, but I was reminded of a quote from the Reverend Muntar Isaac, who's a Palestinian Christian pastor at the Evangelical Lutheran Church in Bethlehem. And he reminded us last Christmas that silence is complicity and empty calls for peace without a ceasefire and an end to occupation, and the shallow words of empathy without direct action are all under the banner of complicity. So I know that you've heard from all of us at Pullman for Palestine a lot, and we're really grateful for you all for being open to talking with us about the ceasefire resolution that was proposed last week. And I really just want to say I appreciate openness to this issue. I think it's a really important issue. I, of course, am standing in favor of this, as is Pullman for Palestine, which is a diverse coalition of students, non-students, all different backgrounds, and I think it really represents the welcome and the diversity that we have here in Pullman. I, like I said, I've lived here my whole life, not quite the '60s because I'm only 30, but I, you know, I'm from a family who's been here for 100 years, and I've learned a lot from Pullman about the importance of welcome and standing in solidarity and helping our neighbors. And to me, this resolution is about standing in solidarity with our Palestinian and Lebanese neighbors here in Pullman, who are asking us to pass a resolution like this. This isn't an issue that's about something, I mean, it is an issue that's happening thousands of miles away, but it's also impacting people that we have who live here. And so I'm standing here as a Pullman resident, and as a Christian, and as somebody who has Palestinian and Lebanese friends, and excited to talk to you all more about this resolution in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any else, anyone else who'd like to provide comment? Please.
Hello, Council. Mayor, my name is Nancy Grunwald. I'm at 1715 Northwest Lamont Street. This is regarding the Pullman for Palestine issue as well, that I just cannot see that it's an issue for our city council at all. I hate to take time even discussing it, but, but there are conflicts all over the, all over the world. Are we supposed to weigh in on every single one of them and make a resolution in our powerless estate here? These are, these are matters of international détente. They are matters for our nation, not our city. People can all have their opinions, but this is not something for our city council, I don't believe, for our city council to have to weigh in on. You have a lot of things to do. You don't need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comments. Next item is City Councilmember Comments, and with that, I'll start with Councilmember Fagerin.
Again, I just want to thank the Downtown Pullman Association, as well as Pullman Civic Trust for such wonderful events this last weekend. Had a great time collecting stickers and looking at the A-frames about all the, all the new stuff going on downtown. And what I learned is Downtown Pullman never had a fire hydrant, and so that one was kind of the biggest surprise. So just thank you so much, the Pullman Civic Trust and Downtown Pullman Association.
Councilmember Parks?
No comments.
Councilmember Wright?
No comment.
Councilmember Guido?
No comment.
Councilmember Weller?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for announcing the Ruck for the Fallen last meeting. There's a huge turnout in support of military, in support of not only veterans but active duty. Pullman Fire was there en masse, and the police, we were raising money for fire, police, military, and it was an absolutely awesome event, and they raised $10,000. And this is something that's been started by Mitch Kribel, who's active duty, and has been on, I believe it's, six tours. And it's for not only health, but mental health as well for military and first responders. So really appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the community for showing up as well.
Great. Councilmember Delara?
No comment.
Councilmember Gaither?
No comment.
And I, as Mayor, I do also want to echo the great time that I had down at the, first look at the concrete. There was, it's great to see different groups that are supporting the downtown and people out there. The next item on the agenda is future agenda requests. Is there any council members that have a future agenda request? Seeing none, moving on to community comments on final action items for the agenda. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comment to the attention of elected officials on any agenda item that the city council will be taking final action on at this meeting, excluding items where public comment was previously accepted. This agenda item for comments is not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments should be directed to the mayor or the council as a body. No comment should be directed to individual council members. Is there anyone who would like to provide comment on final action items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This item lists, under the consent agenda, are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the city council without separate discussion. With that, entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 With that, Mike, if you could please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, tonight, your consent agenda consists of Item 1, Resolution Number R-61-24, a resolution authorizing the execution of leases for each city-owned Guy Street property on the terms set forth for each property. Item 2, Resolution Number R-62-24, a resolution declaring certain property of the city of Pullman to be in excess and surplus property and authorizing the means of disposal. Item 3, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks number 2011-28774 through 2011-28829 totaling $360,793.38. Item 4, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers, and payroll transfers totaling $1,679,364.79. And Item 5, a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Whitman County District Court for misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor prosecution, indigent defense, education, and incarceration costs for 2023 through 2024 court services in Pullman. And Council, there is a typo on that subject on number 5. That should not be 2023 through 2024, it should be 2025, and the rest of the agenda item does reflect that.
With that, is there any council members who desire to have any item removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
With that, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we're up to the regular agenda, and with that, Jeff Albrecht, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, is up first with Ordinance 2414.
Good evening. I'm here to present Ordinance 2414 to adopt the mayor's proposed budget. Just a reminder, we started this process back in June with the adoption of the calendar and staff getting to work. We held the revenue hearing on September 24th. On October 15th, the mayor presented the proposed budget. October 29th, November 4th consisted of budget workshops and department presentations. November 12th was the public hearing on the budget as well as the passing of the levy, which really brings us to the potential adoption of the budget. Just want to give a lot of credit to staff, a lot of staff, both department leaders and other staff put a, put a lot of work into this, and there were some difficult decisions, and I'm sure they all wish they had a little bit more budget flexibility, but there is a real commitment to make sure they still serve the public and despite, you know, revenues being tight. So with that, I were to answer any questions people have.
With that, entertain, first of all, a motion, well, any questions, first of all, Jeff?
Jeff, I had a question. So I know there's been quite a few new projects that have come online in the last year, and that has taken a lot of staff time. Is that, would you say, having a significant impact on the current budget?
It's impactful, yes. I think, you know, staff time is, you know, was really stretched at various times due to some of these projects. You know, there is no new staff, you know, in this budget, so that's, that's something to keep in mind. But with that said, I do think, you know, staff really did the due diligence to make sure they could provide the services, you know, both for existing as well as meeting the, those new resources, I guess.
Okay. I just wanted to mention because, you know, this has been brought to my attention that, and I think some of us on the council have taken on additional responsibilities, which has also stretched the staff, and the staff are always great with showing up, answering questions, and being available to us. So I, I think it's important for us to kind of consider this as we are going into not only the new year, but years to come, that some of these projects that are aside from our regular duties as council, some of the committees and so on and so forth, we may need to start, in my opinion, looking at them in a different light and considering upfront costs not only to the city, but also costs to the staff taking them away from family, and the stress it may put them under. So this isn't, sorry, I'm not, I'm more talking to the council, the challenges, you know, turning this way and that. But I think we've all been feeling the pinch of new committees and so on, and I think moving forward, we may need to start looking at that and thinking about paring that back a little, not only for us, but also for the staff. So those are my opinions.
So with any other questions for Jeff? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to adopt Ordinance Number 24-14.
Second.
Mike, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Number 24-14, an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Pullman for the biennium 2025-2026.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, passes. Thank you, Jeff, and all of staff, all the hard work that's gone into this. And next up, Clayton Forstman with Ordinance R-6324.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. So earlier this year in May, the council authorized an agreement with consulting firm Parametrics Incorporated to design and permit roadway improvements to Airport Drive. That design work is being funded through a federal RACE grant. City staff recommends that water and sewer utility infrastructure be added throughout this same corridor in conjunction with the roadway improvement project. This just makes sense. If you're going to invest all that money in a new road, let's put water and sewer underneath that new road. The caveat is that that utility design work is not eligible to be funded with the RACE grant. Thus, staff have prepared an engineering services agreement for your consideration tonight with the same firm, Parametrics, to design water and sewer utility extensions throughout the corridor. This project would be separate from the RACE grant project and entirely funded with city utility funds. The full scope of work is included in your packet, and all work will be performed on a cost reimbursable basis, with a not-to-exceed amount of $99,385 for the water line design and $194,540 for the sewer design. Staff anticipate design work being completed at the end of 2025, and the timing of construction for the project is contingent upon the Airport Drive Improvements Project being fully funded. It is staff's recommendation that the council adopt the resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Parametrics for the Airport Drive Water Line and Sewer Design Project. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? If not, any, oh, Councilmember Gaither?
Yeah, one quick question. Given the construction time and it's contingent upon the roadway improvement being fully funded, what is the current status of that funding?
So the current plan with the funding for the improvement project to the road is as we wrap up the final design to the road, then we'll seek additional grant money to fund that. Great question.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution Number R-63-24.
Second.
With that, Mike, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution Number R-63-24, a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services agreement between the city of Pullman and Parametrics Incorporated for the Airport Drive Water Line and Sewer Conveyance Project.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Clayton.
Thank you.
Next up, Megan Byning of Resolution R-6424.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Annually, the Public Services Department or Parks and Recreation reviews our program fees and facility charges for the upcoming year, and we present them to city council for consideration and approval. At the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on November 13th, commission members endorse the changes that I will present tonight. Before I get started, and as I explained to the commission members, as price, as prices, excuse me, equipment, supplies, third-party and facility fees continue to rise, our recreation staff have reviewed and analyzed our finances, fees, and charges. The price increases on our programs and facilities will help us to continue to provide the programs, activities that the community enjoys and relies on while continuing to cover the costs of our facilities, equipment, and staffing. As I discussed with staff, and we have for the past few years... As I discussed with staff, and we have for the past few years, we have a difficult job of achieving a delicate balance of being fiscally responsible and maintaining our budget while generating revenue and maintaining recreation user fees for all of our comprehensive set of recreation programs that promote an equitable access for all ages and incomes. As identified in our mission and goals and objectives, it is to offer a complete recreation program as possible within the adopted budget and our key core values of the Pullman Parks and Recreation Department. That's creativity and programming, cost-effectiveness, resource management, responsiveness to the public, program quality and diversity of programs. We feel the fee increases are able to meet our mission, goals, and objectives as well as our comprehensive plan goals. Please see the attached memo that you have provided for you with the highlighted areas for the specific program areas, and I'll read through them as well. First off, is, under our facility rental is Lawson Gardens. We have increased the fee as well as the time for the special event permit and the time to be rented, and based on our twenty twenty-four fees, we have raised them for a direct reflection of staffing, operational costs, and now having the onsite bathroom facilities there. And the next section of fees that we have increased are under our youth sports areas. These really are an increase of direct reflection of the increase that we have with equipment, operational costs. As you can see there, most of the programs now include a jersey, or shorts, or socks, a flag belt, different things included in them, and so the, and some of them are new programs as well. The NFL flag, MLS Go, and Junior NBA are new programs, and along with our girls softball program, they are two of the most expensive programs to run just with the operations of those. The next section is preschool. We have increased the daily fee just up one hour. That will be in effect for the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six school year with the registration that will begin in May of twenty twenty-five. When we did a comparison of local preschools, raising the fee to twenty-two dollars a day, which is a little over seven dollars an hour, we are at the lower end of that, but we want to make sure that we are equitable and provide a program that's, has access to all individuals. The next section is adult sports and fitness. We have highlighted a few different programs that have changed. We've also removed from our programming the dodgeball team and then also footsault, but we're going to provide a different opportunity for them with an open gym and an alternative format. Adult sport increases are really based on direct reflection of staffing, third parties such as officials' fees, as well as operational costs, field prep, materials, and equipment as well. The next section is rainy pool, and we have a couple of increases there. Under the admissions part, we have not increased the daily admission, but we have increased the passes. Some of them are ten dollars, some have gone up fifteen, and other family household passes gone up thirty. Those really are just increasing with the cost of operations for rainy and having the early bird pass at one fee and then the season pass starting on June first is a different fee. We have also added a nonprofit rate for pool rentals, both for the rainy and the aquatic center. Those are discounted at ten dollars per hour for either the lap or recreational pool, and that really is just the discount off of the base level reservation fee, does not apply to any of the additional add-ons such as whip it, or if there's additional participants, or tubes, or boats, or things like that. We've had an increase of nonprofit groups being using both rainy during the summer and the aquatic center, and we wanted to be able to offer them discounts because a lot of them are reserved on a regular, ongoing basis. And we offer a nonprofit rate for room rentals at the recreation center, so we want to apply that to the pools as well. The last one is the aquatic center in terms of the nonprofit rate. It's the same thing, they're just have different pool rental prices, but it's still discounted at ten dollars per hour for either the warm pool or the lap pool. And then the last part is annual pass promotions. We wanted to add two annual pass promotions to our fee schedule. Rainy, we offer an end-of-summer pass that we have offered in the past, but just not included in our fee schedule, and that typically is we will sell the summer passes for all categories at fifty percent off at a discount starting the sixth week of the season. And then the last promotion for rainy is an end-of-season sale. We've never done this before, and I wanted to include it for the first time this year or for twenty twenty-five, is sell the next year's pass at a discount at the twenty twenty, so, be an example, sell the twenty twenty-six pass at the twenty twenty-five rate, and we would sell that only for the month of August of the current year, and then it would be good through the next year at the summer. And then the last one is our portable stage rental, and that is for our mobile stage that we use for concerts in the park, Fourth of July, Leno Fest, lots of different events. This previously was a rental fee that we have in our fee system. It just was not included in our fee schedule for you. We have a fee schedule, and it was put into service in twenty twenty-one, and now we're just adding it to our fee schedule. That is all of the fee schedule changes that I have for you tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
So any questions for Megan? Councilmember Parks?
Just more of a comment. I just want to really say thank you for all the recreation programs that you, that the department offers and the, it's so inclusive, it's so accessible to so many people, and being at a few recent meetings in the evening over in the rec center, it is busy. I mean, there's dance, thumping above, and baskets in the gym, and, and all the things, and it was, it's really fun to see all that activity. So thank you. I know it's a lot of work, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fajaren?
Thank you, Megan. I know it's not easy for us to, to raise rates, but I'm confident we can still provide the, the services that our community wants. I just have a quick question about the stage rental. How often are members of the community renting the portable stage?
I'll defer to Kurt.
Thank you, Council. Really, the, our rentals are in, it's not so much community members, but more organizations. In May, we got the downtown festival, the arts festival is that one. We provide it for the Fourth of July. The Leno Festival uses, uses this, uses it as well. This summer, over in Moscow, rendezvous in the park, rented it for their two-day festival over there. And then the last two years, WSU Alumni Association has rented it for homecoming on Friday night. So that's typically the ones that we've been doing over the last three years.
Thank you, Kurt. Sounds like a great asset for the city.
Yeah, and, and Moscow has stage envy, so it's good. Any other, Councilmember Gaither?
Yes. Megan, you know, I appreciate everything that you all do. My ten-year-old son, he gets to play sports year-round, basketball, soccer, flag football, so I appreciate everything Parks, Parks and Recs do for our community. One quick question, though. I am just a little concerned about the low-income families in our community, and I just want to know, have we conducted an impact analysis to understand how these fee changes might possibly potentially affect participation rates for youth sports?
Thank you. Good question. We have not considered or not, didn't conduct an impact study, but we continually maintain good communication with schools and different organizations in the community, making sure that our residents know about our Care to Share program. And in fact, this year so far, we've given over nine thousand dollars worth of awards to families. So we continue to work with Pullman Schools and a lot of nonprofit organizations that serve families as well, and making sure that they have that information to access the Care to Share scholarships, as well as the new soccer program that we're going with, MLS Go, also has their own scholarship system that we have already been able to use and reimburse families for fall soccer, that they got a full reimbursement of eighty dollars of that, which is above and beyond our Care to Share program as well. So we are always looking at different ways to market and get that information out, so I do welcome any information that any of you might have, a specific group or an area or a community, a group within our community that might benefit from this, be happy to get that information out as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-four.
Second.
Second. With that, Mike, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution number R-sixty-four dash two-four, a resolution amending a fee schedule for parks and recreation programs and facility use effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass, and thank you, Megan, very much for all your hard work.
Thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you.
With that, we have one last thing before we get to our, our highlighters tonight with the, I'm going to adjourn the, the city council meeting and open the Metropolitan Parks District meeting. And with that, Deistais Elliott, will you please call roll?
President Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Delara.
Here.
Commissioner Fajaren.
Here.
Commissioner Gaither.
Here.
Commissioner Guido.
Here.
Commissioner Parks.
Here.
Commissioner Weller.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And with that, I'll bring Jeff Albrecht back up, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, related to resolution number MPD twenty-four oh-two.
Sure. Thank you again. Before you, tonight is a resolution to adopt the budget for the metro parks. The process for the metro parks budget really paralleled the city, so we started off in June, held the revenue hearing, the workshops, the public hearing and the levy last week, and at this point bring forward the resolution to adopt the budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
With that, any, any questions for Jeff? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve resolution number MPD twenty-four dash oh-two.
Second.
That, Mike, if you could please read the resolution?
Resolution number MPD two-four dash zero-two, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget of the Pullman Metropolitan Parks District by appropriating monies for park district operations and matters properly related thereto.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much again, Jeff. With that, I'm going to adjourn the Metropolitan Parks District meeting, and we will reconvene the regular council meeting at seven forty-five. That'll give us time to be able to get organized with ASWSU. So with that, we're adjourned till for five minutes, and then we'll be back. Put the lights on.
Put the lights on.
The Stop Campus Hazing Act. Additionally, we'll be working on revitalizing the United States Student Association to better represent the student interests at a federal level. In Savannah Baker and Kendall Hayes' work with the Department of Diversity, Inclusion, and Veteran Affairs, we've made significant strides in ensuring all students are heard and supported. Our team has spent time engaging directly with diverse communities we represent: students of color, the LGBTQ plus students, veterans, and other represented groups, taking the time to listen to their needs and concerns. This engagement helped inform key initiatives such as our recent Minority Months featured on KZZU Radio, where the Native American Student Center curated a playlist to celebrate Native American Heritage Month. Additionally, we worked with WSU's Compliance and Civil Rights Department to implement a new Executive Policy 15 that will enhance protections and promote equity across campuses. On Veterans Affairs, we have been able to provide our Veterans Association with an allotment of tickets to the Utah State Football Game, as well as discounted tickets to the University of Idaho Basketball Game, which we won, as part of our Veterans Day celebration. Moving on to the Health and Safety Department led by Mauro Ramirez is another core priority for ASWSU. We are working hard to ensure that every student has access to the resources they need to stay safe and healthy. We are coordinating with WSU Residence Hall to advance the installation of Narcan Emergency Kits in every dorm. This initiative will help ensure that students have access to life-saving measures in the event of an opioid overdose. Additionally, we are finalizing arrangements for first aid and CPR workshops, which will be available to all interested students free of charge. These workshops will help equip students with the critical lifesaving skills. And as mentioned earlier, the department also hosted Coog's Thrive Fest, a mental health symposium that focused on mental health, education, resources, and support for students in need. Finally, our communications team, Cristo de los Santos and Kaylee Sparks, have been working diligently to ensure that students stay informed and are engaged with ASWSU initiatives. In November, we have been promoting the Listening Session on Sexual Violence on College Campuses hosted by Representative Orwell to increase awareness and encourage student participation. We are also hosting a Meet Your ASWSU Exec Team Campaign on Instagram and TikTok, where students can get to know our team and easily access our contact information. We have been amplifying important events like Native American Heritage Month events and the Housing Fair that occurred on November 12th. Additionally, we are actively collecting student feedback through the Washington Student Experience Survey, which will be open through November 22nd. We encourage students to share their experiences, as this helps us guide our efforts to better serve them. And as Director of Community Affairs, I am pleased to share several recent updates regarding initiatives aimed at improving our community's well-being. These projects highlight our ongoing commitment to supporting residents, students, and families through collaboration and engagement with local organizations and partners. We recently held the Lend a Hand, Give a Can Food Drive with the goal of addressing food's insecurity in Pullman. Thanks to the incredible generosity of volunteers and residents, we were able to raise 1,400 pounds of food. This food has been distributed to the WSU Food Pantry and other organizations that attack food insecurity, providing essential support to help families that are facing hardship. This initiative truly highlights the power of community collaboration, and I want to extend my deepest gratitude to everyone who contributed in making this food drive a success. In partnership with College Cabs, we hosted a housing fair aimed at improving access to safe, affordable housing for students and community members. During the event, local property owners were able to showcase their availability, giving students and residents a chance to connect directly with landlords and property managers. This event helped make the housing market more transparent and accessible, and it provided important resources for individuals to look for when searching for housing. I'm proud of this collaboration and the opportunity it gave us to better support both students and the broader Pullman community. Last night, we conducted a fall-term walk audit in collaboration with GPSA, College Hill Matters, College Hill Association, and the City of Pullman. The purpose of this walk audit was to identify accessibility and safety concerns in areas around WSU campus and College Hill. During the audit, we focused on assessing sidewalk quality, lighting, and crosswalk safety. We identified several areas that required attention, including uneven sidewalks and poorly lit crosswalks, which create safety risks particularly after dark. These findings will be compiled into a report, and we will be working closely with the City of Pullman and other stakeholders to prioritize and address the concerns in the coming months. In closing, ASWSU is committed to our students in making Washington State University a place where all students can thrive, whether it's through legislative advocacy, mental health support, enhancing campus safety, and increasing access to leadership positions. We are working tirelessly to support the needs of our student body. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer.
So, any questions? Councilmember Weller?
So, as somebody who's been working quite a bit in mental health, what kind of training do you and the rest of the senators have training as far as mental health first aid, QPR, those sorts of things?
In terms of training, we all go through an understanding of health training when we are admitted into the university. So, that kind of cracks the, like, surface level. In terms of mental health, mental health has been a very taboo conversation, especially in the past. As students, we are just now moving forward with making it more normalized on college campuses in terms of seeking counselors for help or talking to ASWSU representatives in terms of getting you to the right person. So, we have an understanding of mental health, but for our students, we want to get them the best of the best, and we direct them to any mental health services that are offered on campus or in Pullman.
Okay. I will suggest
Yeah.
...training such as QPR is question, persuade, refer, so I'm a trainer for that. And there's several trainers in our community now, so it helps reduce suicide.
Yeah.
So, it's suicide training. And then also, there is mental health first aid, and so the QPR training is only about an hour. Mental health first aid can go up to an entire day, but there are shorter.
Yeah.
So, as far as the senators and so on, if that is a priority of yours, I'm very much into You Walk the Walk. And so, it's important to understand, my bachelor's is in psychology, and so it's very important to understand these issues for those that maybe are not familiar with it. So, I'm suggesting that. I'm glad, you know, mental health is a part of that. I speak very openly here about anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation, those sorts of things, because I've experienced that.
Yeah.
Especially going through college where, you know, the university, it can be extremely stressful, and, you know, sometimes you can feel very alone. The other thing that I will say as far as veterans, so, the veterans have quite a few events. Does ASWSU attend any of those events?
As of now, I know that our Diva Team, the Diversity, Inclusion, and Veterans Affairs have been in very close contact with the Veterans Association. I can't speak to how much in contact they are with the Veterans Affairs, but I know they're there. I know they're responding to emails. I know they had a couple of meetings prior to Veterans Day, so I know that line of communication is open, and always, there's always more work to be done, and so our Diva Team knows that, and they've been very on top of it, thankfully.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I will say this is one of the most professional presentations I've seen in the 17 years, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Delira?
Yeah, thank you so much for giving me such a thorough overview of all the great things that you're all doing at ASWSU. So, one of the things I'm really excited for is obtaining a copy of your legislative agenda, and I know that you spoke on state, state issues around the increase of the Washington College Grant and the posts, and I guess, Basic Needs, which I'm assuming is connected to the Post-Secondary Basic Needs Act. So, I'm hoping that us including it in our City of Pullman legislative agenda will help you in your state advocacy work around those two concerns.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I guess the question I have around that is, do you have anything in your legislative agenda around local issues?
Well, recently, we, well, tuition has been voted on to increase for these next coming years, and our Director of Legislative Affairs, Colin Tucker and Bargoff, have been really on it in terms for advocating for, well, in terms of that increase. We just, or they just had a meeting last week regarding the issue, so we do focus on local matters. I think as of now, we've been very, we're spearheading that in a certain way, but yeah, that's our main agenda as of now.
I have a second question. In your discussion around safety, I think what stood out is the Narcan Kits, which is great to have available. Is there, this is a very heavy question for me to ask, which is, is there a concern with students around opiate overdoses? Is that like a prominent issue that's happening?
I would pass it to, if you're able to speak on it a little bit.
And while he's coming up, there definitely is a concern in that area. As a member, I'm a faculty member at WSU and also on one of the safety committees, I actually pushed for getting Narcan into all of the availability and to all the different department access that way through their first aid kits and stuff, and so I actually pushed that way so it was available from the university staff and faculty side.
Yeah, just to add on to that, so I work really closely with Cougar Health Services, more specifically, Dr. Sunday Henry, who is the Director, our main point of contact when it comes as far as like, safety on campus, and that's just been one of our more important projects, is really making sure that our students are trained in Narcan, just for, you know, any, at any given moment, stuff can happen, and it's, it's seen a little more prevalent in Greek life, more specifically, Greek row on campus, so that's kind of been our area of target, making sure that our students are trained. At any given moment, stuff can happen, so we want to make sure that we can save as many lives as we can, so.
Any more?
Great, thank you very much.
Oh, now we'll be introducing, we'll be moving on to Senate with Pro Tempora Anusha Bois.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Anusha Bois, and I'm from Bellevue, Washington, and I serve as the Senate Pro Tempore of the ASWSU Senate, which is our legislative branch here. Currently, we are a team of 20 senators with six senators representing the whole campus, four senators representing our uncertified student population, and 10 senators representing each academic college, two freshman delegates, and one admin assistant. We are the main policymaking body, where through legislation and financial oversight of our multicultural and awareness committees and the Crimson and Gray Fund, we represent the interests of the student body and address their concerns. So far this year, we have passed a total of 13 pieces of legislation, with more legislation to come, both this semester and next semester. The two main forms of legislation we pass are bills, which are amendments to the ASWSU bylaws that we follow, and resolutions, which are call-to-action stating the will or intent of ASWSU. Each of our senators and delegates, along with passing legislation, sit on one of our three Senate Committees, which are the Internal Affairs Committee, the External Affairs Committee, and the Engagement Committee, which you'll be hearing about more in a little bit. Along with me, each of our chairs and vice chairs serve on the Rules Council, which is focused on reviewing legislation from our committees before reaching the Senate floor, setting the agenda for upcoming weekly Senate meetings, which are held every Wednesday at 5:30 PM in the Compton Union Building, discuss weekly updates within each committee, and discuss important changes or announcements that are happening in Senate. Now, this is a brief overview of our Senate, and you're going to hear today from each of our committee chairs and vice chairs to learn more about each committee, their accomplishments this semester, and their future goal afterwards. After that, you're going to hear from some of us, wondering questions that we have on different topics and concerns in regards to WSU and Pullman. Before I hand it off to our chair and vice chairs of our Internal Affairs Committee, are there any questions that y'all have for me? All righty, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and hand this off to Senator G. Carpenter and Senator Howe, who are Internal Affairs Chairs and Vice Chair.
Hello, thank you guys for having us. My name is Grace Carpenter, I'm from Spokane Valley, and I am the All-Campus Senator and Internal Chair, here with my Vice Chair, Hallie Howe. So, Internal's main focus is maintaining our committee's bylaws and bills. So, basically, through our committee meetings once a week on Tuesdays, we review the bylaws and make bills, editing those bylaws for our ASWSU. In addition, my committee sits on Budget Council, which is deciding the budget for all of the clubs and organizations on campus, and then Internal also plans two bondings. One is mainly to bond the Senate, and then the other one is a community outreach event.
Awesome. I know Grace already introduced me, but my name is Howe, I'm from Redmond, Washington, and I also sit on the Senate, and I'm Vice Chair of the Internal Affairs Committee. I have a few questions on behalf of our committee. One, actually regarding to Councilmember Weller, I know you mentioned that you wanted to kind of implement more mental health and how we weren't exactly trained on that. I was just wondering if you would possibly be willing to train our Senate or exec, or would know anyone that would be willing to do that for us? So, I know that mental health is definitely one of the biggest initiatives that we've been pushing this year, so if you're interested in that, that'd be great for you to reach out to us. And then, one other question we had was, do you think, or like, how can ASWSU be more involved in community projects and events here in Pullman?
And I can start while the council's thinking about how they'll respond to that one. So, as you've asked, the community projects, the first thing I'd say is, Center for Civic Engagement has a platform they use, which is Give Pulse, I'm assuming you're familiar with it. That is a platform that's actually been made available for all of our nonprofits within the region, and so when our nonprofits have needs or volunteer, many of them actually use that Give Pulse platform. So, I'd look to there, it's actually a great way that if you have specific passions in certain areas, that you can get connected and actually walk out some of your passions in that way. As we look at getting involved in community events, from the city side, the two areas where we have probably the greatest events that would be connected is either going to be on the Parks and Rec side or going to be on the library side. And within Parks and Rec, there's a number of different programs, activities they do. In fact, they do, they do have an activity book. In fact, if you, as you're walking out, you can see one that's on one of the desks, not the tables that are there, and as a part of that, not only is that opportunity for you to get connected into those activities, but you can, if you have a specific skillset that you would like to be able to train or share others in, that's, there's actually a way that you can actually put on classes and lead classes that way, specifically related to that. As we move into the community area, then that's where we're looking. Most of our community events are going to be chamber-led or going to be DPA-led for the overarching, and that's where you have our Lentle Festival, Fourth of July, we have the Holiday Tree Lighting that's coming up December 7th, we have Three Forks River Arts Festival, things like that. There's always opportunities to engage and get the students connected in, but then we also have, a number of our nonprofits are going to be, do things around Earth Day, they're going to do things around stream cleanups, highway cleanups, so depending on what your passion is, there's a number of opportunity connection points that way, too. And so, but, so I don't just, I'm the only one talking, are there other areas that, as people have thought about ways we can get the students connected in the community? Ann, Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I might repeat a little bit of what a mayor said, but definitely CCE is a great place to start, but also, it's okay to reach out to a nonprofit, like the United Way, the Kiwanis, the Rotary. We have many organizations in town that you can find, and we can provide that for you as well, but, you know, because you can't, you can't know everything. I mean, so anyway, if you have an interest, or maybe your parents are involved in a nonprofit in your town, there's probably a chapter of it here as well, so that's kind of a comfortable way to start. Also, sexual assault prevention was mentioned as one of the focus legislative agendas, so we also have what I would call quieter nonprofits, like Alternatives to Violence of the Palouse, and I know we collaborate a lot on campus, we present, and we also are partnered with a few sororities, and they do fundraising for us and fraternities as well. And so, again, that's an organization that, and I work there, full disclosure, but we can always use help, and we're specifically always looking for volunteers to help work our hotline, for example, and so, if you're interested in something like that, again, you can just reach out, say you heard about it from that lady at council, don't know who it is, and, but, I mean, my point is, you can, there are a lot of organizations, you can get involved in the schools, the schools are often looking for volunteers to work with students, to help with youth sports and things like that, so there are a lot of opportunities that, and I'm sure the Center for Community Engagement would be a good place to start and would hopefully have a list of those things, but there's, there are a lot of things out there, and the organizations that I think all of us are involved in are always looking for volunteers, and most of them, many of them are the ones that I named, so, and I appreciate you. We appreciate the student population so much. I have a friend moving this weekend, and she was like, "I need help, I don't know what to do," and I said, "Contact the Center for Community Engagement, maybe they send some volunteers over to help," and that gives those volunteers hours as well, especially as we near the end of the semester, correct? Yes. So, we appreciate you very much, and we advocate a lot, we in the community, for everything that you do to help us out as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, on the first question, yes, of course, and I'll give you my card. I can also get you in contact with, there's a regional mental health group called Resilient, and it's extremely effective, we have a lot of trainers there. As far as mental health, mental health first aid training, that is a specialty that usually we bring somebody in from Spokane on, but I can check and see if we have a local expert that might be able to help, and I think some WSU professors may have training in that, but I think you would have to check on that.
Yeah, our college, I mean, I went through the training, and our college offers it to all the staff and faculty.
Yeah. So, as far as the second question, you know, as the mayor, the mayor's been extremely involved for a very, very long time in a lot of groups, a lot of nonprofits. To that list, I would also add the Humane Society. So, the Furball will be coming up, Furball, it's fundraiser event, will be coming up in February. They always need help, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of pets that are abandoned, and this is kind of a segue, which is kind of an uncomfortable con, you know, subject, but I think it's also important to mention. A lot of times, what we have found in the City of Pullman is that when people come here for school, sometimes they feel very alone, which is understandable, and then when they leave, many of those pets become abandoned. That's really, really difficult to see. My own dog is a rescue, he was abandoned on the Moscow-Pullman Highway at four months, and these, I'm bringing it up to you because you're leadership, and this stuff is happening, I'm not saying any of you, but there is a trend. And so, in amongst all of this great work, I think also, right here in the city, it's very important to understand, we have challenges that come up when, you know, these animals who didn't have a choice, you know, are left, and that happens yearly, and there's an influx. On a lighter topic, I will say that not only the City of Pullman should be explored, but also the region, and I've talked to people at WSU about this before, and I'm very much about looking at a region. Wherever I travel, you know, the city is very important, doing the research there, but also, what does the region hold? And there's a lot of really cool events, it's not just volunteering and those sorts of things, it's a lot of really cool stuff going on. You know, there's a haunted hospital in Colfax I just went to, you know, they have speedboat races out in St. John, you know, if you haven't seen that, geez. Gosh, see, they have a combine derby where they crash old combines into each other. That is, that is cool, eating, you know, high-fat food and watching a bunch of, you know, old combines crash into each other. What I'm trying to get across, and also Haunted Palouse, and I know some of you probably have gone to that and things like this, what I'm trying to get across is, it's really important to be involved in the community, but also, it's important to see the value of the entire region on, you know, which you live, and I know, I'm going to WSU when I was, it's, you can get this sense of, there's nothing to do, absolutely nothing, but you just have to look a little bit, whether that's downtown, Terracotta has some awesome, you know, pottery, I just got into pottery, I'm horrible at it, but, you know, they have a lot of really cool stuff downtown, and it's just looking a little bit, so, those are, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Delira?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that ASWSU seems to be very well-integrated into our community, and I just want to acknowledge that, like, thank you for putting together the food drive. I know that students themselves are just naturally very involved in the Pullman community, and we all really rely on you to participate in service and support our local businesses, and y'all add to the overall vibe of our city. I guess one idea that would be great to see is, I know that the student radio station, KZZU, put together the Really Cool Music Festival. I don't know if ASWSU co-sponsored that, but anything that gets those type of events going, and you can support it in some way, that would be awesome. One thing that would be helpful, especially now that we have this downtown project done, is to have events, maybe organizing events that would bring students down to downtown, that'd be great, and then I'll kind of package this, package this up a little bit more, but I encourage you all to think out of the box, start your own projects and your own movements, even if it's, if it hasn't been done before, if there's no organization that's out there that's doing it, just go ahead and go forward with the steps to create it, and contact sympathetic city officials that might be, that might be willing to help you out in official or unofficial basis, so, yeah.
So, how's that?
That was a great response, couldn't have asked for any better. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. We'll now pass it off to Engagement Chair, Senator Velazquez, and his Vice Chair, Senator Wilson Ramirez.
All right, this is a good change of pace, it's like, I feel like I'm on C-span down there, but I'm Isaac Velazquez, I'm from Tacoma, Washington. there. Um, but, uh, I'm Isaac Velazquez, I'm from Tacoma, Washington. Um, I'm an all-campus senator, and I'm the chair of the engagement committee.
Yeah, and, um, I'm Leo Wilson Ramirez, I'm also all-campus senator, and I'm vice chair for the engagement committee. And then I'm from White Salmon, Washington.
All right, so really the engagement committee oversees and facilitates, uh, the relations between, um, our programming committees, which are really our multicultural and awareness advocacy groups. Um, so if you ever heard of the Veterans Committee, um, the Black Student Union, um, Asian Pacific American Student Coalition, uh, the Environmental Sustainability Alliance, um, those groups are ASWSU committees, um, and so we just facilitate the relationships between those groups. Um, and we're also the primary finance-focused, um, committee, um, and so all of our members sit on Budget Council, which I chair, um, and we basically decide the budget allocations for some of those groups, as Senator Carpenter mentioned, um, such as, they're not just those committees that I just named, um, but also some of the non-ASWSU clubs. Um, you've probably heard of Cable 8, um, the other college radio, KUGR, um, and then something about KZUU, um, they are an ASWSU committee through the executive branch, um, so that's really awesome. Um, and then also, Leo and I, we, um, are also part of the Crimson and Gray Committee, which, uh, facilitates some of the funding for different, uh, RSOs, any RSO around campus. Um, and then also any referendum, in the rare case that a referendum is proposed to ASWSU to be voted on by the general student population, that also gets, um, passed through, uh, the committee.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, um, I'll just talk a little bit about our goals for next semester. Um, so our goal right now is pretty much to clean up our Budget Council processes. Um, it changed a little bit this year, it was moved up to the fall semester when it's usually, um, the spring. Uh, so we're aiming to smooth out the process for our programming committees and clear up any issues that have been made known to us. Um, that's pretty much the overview, and it's also, we're trying to clear up any discrepancies we have, uh, or pro, our programming committees have with our SNA funding. Um, we allocate a certain amount, but in the end, um, it's also up to SNA, that's like the next step. So, um, sometimes we'll approve them for, for an amount, but it might not be the amount they get in the end, uh, based on their SNA allocations.
So, we don't have any, we don't have any questions just yet, but are there any questions y'all have for us?
Not seen any.
Cool, sweet, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all for your time and for having us here today, and, um, I'll be sharing some updates regarding external committee and the tabling events we've organized this year. So our first tabling event, um, focused on health and safety around campus, and we collaborated with Maro Ramirez, who came up here earlier, who's the director of health and safety. And this created a survey, and we asked students if, um, they knew where to access medical resources on campus, their interest in attending a first aid and CPR training course or a workshop, and how ASWSU can direct students to find these medical resources on campus. Um, the second tabling event we've had this semester, um, featured a survey aimed to improve, um, Ruby Street's recreational activities and assessing the quality of water around the water fan, fountains in the Cub. And our most recent tabling event promoted, um, Coogs Thrive Fest, um, which is an event for our mental health and wellness, and this is for students, and highlighted the various resources available at WSU. And we plan on having more tabling events next semester and look forward to hearing from students in the coming semesters.
Okay, and then, um, before I begin, I just wanted to thank, um, all of y'all for helping, um, plan this, and especially Mike Urban for his responsiveness to my emails. Um, but just a brief, um, overview of the functions of external. So we are the ones who first hear, um, resolutions that were written by senators, and then, just as Senator Lamprey mentioned, um, we also plan the tabling events for ASWSU Senate, and so those are kind of the biggest, um, focuses of our meetings. Um, our tabling events are really a tool to get student feedback, and senators and other members of ASWSU can use this, um, feedback with their resolutions or their projects. Um, moving on to the goals that we have for our committee next semester, we have a few. For one, um, we want to try to figure out how we can reach more students, whether that be by adapting our tabling events or even hosting, maybe like a bigger outreach event next semester. We also, um, are trying to grow our Instagram, um, as that has recently fallen under the externals', um, role. And then lastly, um, I think oftentimes students don't know the specific resolutions we pass, so figuring out an effective way to, um, spread that news, because students give us their feedback and they oftentimes don't know, um, where that's going. So we just think that if students can see and know what their voices are actually doing, um, they, this might lead us to see more participation. Um, before I transition into the questions portion, um, is there any questions about external committee?
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I have a question, you said you, pardon me, you're working on, uh, ways to reach more students, and I know, I think this is a, it's a, it's a large issue for a lot of us, and here in the community too, with our nonprofits especially, it's like, how do we recruit more volunteers? How do we get the word out about our events? And so, I'm wondering on campus, are you experiencing the sort of fractured sources of information? So you have Instagram, the Evergreen websites, all of that, and have you come up with any innovative ways to, or are you working on ways to bring it together, or do you just try to get all of your information onto each of those sources? Because we sort of face that as well.
Yeah, so I think that, um, in, uh, social media has been used as, um, a way for us to get that student feedback, but I think the main way we get it is through, um, tabling. So that's where we just set up a table, and students can fill out a QR code, and there's a questionnaire, um, through that QR code. But I do feel as if, um, we aren't getting, um, uh, the best, um, amount of responses that we could, and from, um, a more representative, um, poll too, just because, um, I think this was brought up by someone from ASWSU, but I know it was said that, um, not everyone goes to the place where we table.
Right.
So maybe going to different places, um, kind of, instead of having them come to us, I think doing something where we go out there, go to different, um, spaces that students might be at, would be, uh, a new and maybe more effective way to get more voice.
That's really good, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
No?
Okay, um, so that being said, um, we did table to hear, um, students' concerns and questions that they might have for us to bring up to you all. So if people who, um, were said to have questions want to, um, kind of line up, but we'll have Senator Lamprey start.
Logan, um, I was curious with construction updates, do you have anything to say regarding that, um, regarding the students and the community?
Uh, so, construction, particularly the downtown?
Yes, specifically.
Project? Uh, well, we're excited that we were able to open the road, um, and so we have that going on. There's still construction that's continued going on as a part of it. Uh, if we, if we look at the project, the project had four main goals as, as a part of that, uh, construction. One is for the people-centric, uh, how, how do we make it so that it's, you, people enjoy it better being down there? Uh, we, so we had the people-centric piece, we wanted to slow the traffic down, uh, so that people just didn't rush, rush through the downtown, but actually slowed down, uh, and that also reduced the noise as it related to, to that. Uh, the third one had to do with infrastructure, uh, we had a lot of old pipes that were down under the ground, and we went through and replaced all the waters, sewer, stormwater. Uh, some of the pipes were over a hundred years old, and they're only rated for fifty years, and, and those aren't going to last forever in that way. Um, and then the last one was really, um, improving the accessibility. Uh, we had a number of trip and fall hazards that were as a part of the sidewalks, uh, and so to smooth those out. So those are really the four big areas, and, and the downtown is, I mean, it's open, the students should come down and, and really experience it. There's a lot of great things, and, and as, as you've heard from some of the earlier conversations, that it's something that, uh, people are enjoying being down there. Uh, we do have, you know, two new businesses that, that are talking about coming in right now. We don't have a, an actual opening date yet, but two more restaurants that are, uh, that are being worked on, so that's, that's pretty exciting, too, and that's part of what we expected as a part of the downtown project, is there is going to be an increase in, in businesses that wanted to be down in that area.
Thank you so much.
Um, with the recent unsafe events going on in Pullman that are greatly affecting the student, um, population, as well as I'm sure the, um, just maybe in downtown, um, is there a plan of action on how we can address the safety concerns happening?
And what I'd like to do is bring our police chief up, so Jake Optenorth, to, since, as it relates to safety, and safety is something that is very important, uh, in our community, uh, and we, we take it very serious, um, and Jake's going to be the best one to talk about. What are the things that are being worked on?
All right, thank you. Um, so first, I guess, I'd like to point out that, um, in Pullman, we have two police jurisdictions. WSU has its own police department, WSU Police Department, and I believe that's where some of, uh, the concerns are happening. And, um, so I'm not, I can't really speak to that since that's not my jurisdiction. What we're doing in Pullman is just, um, always doing proactive patrols, and we're always out there. Um, we participated in the walkout yesterday, so we're looking at, uh, anything that we can do as far as safety goes. Um, but really, uh, I just encourage that if you ever see anything, just to always report it. We hear a lot of things that are concerns, but we never get the report to us. We pick it up just like anybody else on social media, and then it makes it a little bit harder for us to respond in a, in a proper way when we're just responding to social media. So just always report your concerns to us, and then we're always available for you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, and understand, our, our policing perspective is, is that of community policing as opposed to enforcement. Uh, they're really there to build commu, community connections, uh, as opposed to how can we write a ticket? So, it's just a perspective that way. Please.
All right, so I sit on the Transit Advisory Group, um, and a frequent ask from students is wanting to extend bus times, uh, extending bus times later into the night. Um, and I guess, how could that maybe be possible? And then, are there any plans to extend or modify, uh, current transit services?
So how if I bring another staff member up? So, Wayne Thompson, who is our Transit manager, and he can speak best to that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'll talk briefly about the, the process and that, that request in particular. Uh, we receive requests year-round, whether it's a phone call, email, face-to-face, complaint, complaint, or public forums like this. So, um, your, your request is noted. It's the first time I've heard a recent request for evening service extensions, so that's, that's good. I, I am aware of requests for daytime expressives to go longer, and also a common request is for the four buses on campus to join as one route, you know, figure eight. So, I want to acknowledge those, first of all. So all the requests that we get throughout the year, we compile those. Uh, early spring, before the students go home for the summer, we will be back here with a, a public forum, uh, maybe even a public hearing and a council meeting. We'll present our service package that we recommend, uh, the changes we think are feasible and, uh, fundable. That's a key part there, is, will this increase the, the, the funding we need? And we'll come back in the summer with a recommended package to, to council. So, with that said, these are things that are noted, will be considered this spring. But I would also strongly encourage you to, to share these through the Transit Advisory Group, and I appreciate that you're, that you're a member. Those requests come to us through the WSU Transportation Services Department, and when they come with the Transit Advisory Group stamp on it, those are, those are recommendations, those are, those are endorsed requests, and we, we look very seriously at those. So, so, uh, evening service, we're already midnight, my understanding, is that the Wheat and Lentil really are not meeting the needs of off, on-campus to home. That's, that's the request, as I understand it, so, uh, duly noted, and I thank you for that.
Okay.
Hello again. Um, so, just kind of through some research and recent announcements that, um, I've been hearing, um, both in Senate and in general, I've been hearing about the Town Gown Collaborative, and I was wondering if y'all could kind of give a description of kind of what this is to all of us, and also what benefits this is going to bring for the population here in Pullman, especially our student population, and what we can do as ASWSU to get more student involvement when it comes to that.
So the Town Gown Collaborative, it's, uh, as you think about it, town and gown, so it's this, is the university and the city coming together, uh, and when we say city is city in the broad sense, that includes our businesses, that it's not just city government. Um, and how do we build relationships between, uh, you know, WSU is a big entity, uh, as it relates to the city, and how can we work in a collaborative fashion? Uh, the Town Gown does meet, uh, the fourth Tuesday of the month, seven-thirty in the morning. I, I know mornings might be a little challenging, but, uh, and, and that's something that we've had WSU, WSU, ASWSU participation in previously, and it'd be great to have that participation again. Uh, as a part of the Town Gown Collaborative, there's three main committees. Uh, there's one that is a, and I have to look at my notes, just so I get the names all correct on them. Uh, you have the Connect, Connectivity and Belonging that's looking at, uh, what are ways in order to increase connectivity, increase belonging between the Town Gown and the community. Uh, we have College Hill Matters that really is focused on, uh, how do, how do we make College Hill more people-centric or Walkers Paradise? They look a lot at safety issues that way. There's also a, um, marketing events, uh, group that's looking at how do we increase the number of events and, and in, uh, between the, the two, the town and the gown. Uh, and then there is, just started this fall, a subcommittee, uh, that's focused on childcare, just because of the issue of childcare that, that has really, uh, raised significance in, in this last fall. Actually, not just last fall, but during, during this last year. And so those are the, the main areas, but it's really looking at how do we increase the collaboration between them. Uh, there's a number of people that attend, uh, you know, even here, the Town Gown, anyone wants to addition. Councilmember Weller?
Yeah, I know, um, a few of us have attended, you know, uh, since the very beginning, and, um, I think it's been very effective in creating those closer bonds, you know, in the past, WSU and Pullman have, I wouldn't say been adversarial, but it hasn't been really cohesive. And so, um, I think there's a representative, is it GPSA, this, or ASWSU that comes on occasion?
Normally, it's, it would be External Affairs is the one that, External Relations that does, but it, it kind of varies from, from year to year.
Yeah. Well, there you go.
And, yeah.
I mean, you're involved, uh, if you come, you know? Yeah.
Oh, I was just going to touch on that. So we have representatives from both ASWSU and GPSA, but sometimes it does vary year to year, but currently, we've got our Director of Community Affairs, um, going to those.
And I will be there at the next town again.
So, so it's next Tuesday is, is when it is. Unfortunately, I'm out of town, so I won't be there, but others will be there.
It is on my calendar, and I know they're offering a Zoom option potentially, possibly?
I, I'm, Marie Darmkowsky is the one that kind of coordinates that, and so I, um, normally it's in, we, what we've tried to do is in-person, just because to do a hybrid, it's really hard to do discussions when you have hybrid attendance, so that's why we've tried to just do in-person for that. Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Um, Chancellor Dave Saleh here on our campus, he has started Conversation, Coffee with the Chancellor, and he invites, um- And he invites, um, people from WSU and community members. And I took, I participated in the first one in September. And there were probably a dozen, 15 people there that sat in the living room at the, at the chancellor's residence. And it was really something to hear each other's perspectives about. Childcare came up from the employees. And then, you know, I said, well, the, the Pullman community, you know, you talk about, oh, let's go to the museum on campus or the, the concert or whatever. And the first reaction is, ugh, parking. I'm like, okay, there's structures, it's easy, but it's very intimidating to a lot of people in, in the city to go to the university. So he, he is really trying to work on opening up that, those lines of communication and hearing each other about, oh, I didn't know that this was an issue on campus. I mean, there was a Residence Hall Director there, student, RA, RSA, sorry. But there, there were students there, faculty, staff, Dr. Saleh and his wife, and then my, uh, the one I was at, it was County Commissioner Tom Handy and then me. And it was just really something. So I don't know if AWSU, I don't think there was anybody there from that one, may, maybe, but maybe looking into that because that's a really, it's small, but it's a really nice way to have those conversations. You could contact Haley James at his office and she would be able to tell you if, you know, when the next ones are and what the openings are. But I found that to be a really good model to just have 10 or 12 people in a room and sharing their, their experiences from, from both sides, town and gown. So, and maybe that's something ASWSU could even take up as well, you know, carry that out in, in a different way too. So just like, let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Ainsley Carpenter. I'm the College of Arts and Science Senator. So regarding the downtown project and it coming to a congratulating end, I'm curious about the tree species and other flora being planted. Could you share any species, specifically trees or any bushes or flora that have been selected and whether the city has considered the tree sex particularly in relation to pollen production? Planting predominantly tree, male trees can significantly increase urban pollen levels, which can exacerbate allergy issues. And us as college kids, you know, one sneeze can turn into pneumonia. And additionally, was consideration given to supporting local wildlife versus focus, focusing primarily on the beautification process when selecting these specific species?
Jerome?
Sorry, that was a lot.
So, so, so within the tree process, we, we had a number of people that were involved in the discussion related to tree process and related to what species. As a community, they, they, whereas previously we had one species, they actually wanted diversity of species and so we went with the diversity of species. And there were a number of people involved in the process of selection of species, I would say, or species. One of the things we look at is, you know, survival, how long they're going to live, those, those are, you know, how they're going to look, you know, what type of shape they're going to be is a lot of those pieces. How did I do?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
First off, I just want to say thank you for having us. I realize now as I look around, I see a lot of familiar faces, so I want to thank you all for being engaging and active members in our community. One question I had was pertaining to student engagement within downtown. I was sitting in ESA's last club meeting last week where they had the owners of Black Cypress and Bruiser Books come and talk about just downtown Pullman and the conclusion of the construction. And one of their concerns was student traffic, it's just not as accessible for students, especially freshman students to come down from maybe their dorms or their apartments. Of course, with the advent of the scooters and the bikes, that has been a bit, a bit better. But I was wondering, what are like future or current initiatives or plans to kind of increase student traffic through downtown?
Well, we do have, you know, first of all, transit that, that does travel from campus down through the downtown. If we're trying to, to get students there, I don't know if you're, if you're, is your question more around transportation or is it around events to attract?
Kind of more events or just?
More events.
Activities or things of that nature.
So Councilmember Guido?
Well, I know this isn't fair, but I'd love to put it back on you guys. What, what is going to draw you downtown? Cause this conversation has been happening very long history of how do we draw students downtown?
Um, well, food works a lot, so things in that area will be good. I know clubs like BSU do events such as their barbecue, so that gets students and members of the community just together. So I guess food and any other ideas you guys have would be great.
Well, and the, the scooters was brought up and that was a, a big decision for us to provide that as another way of accessing downtown, realizing that not everybody has a car and, um, isn't using the bus. So if we can promote that better, please let us know. Cause they're, they're, they exist. I mean, they're down even in the parks and I see them at Sunnyside Park and that's such a nice park to just get away to. And, um, you know, I see some people just sitting down there and reading, but I'd love to see more students.
Sounds good.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Earlier, you saw the presentation from the Downtown Pullman Association and they, uh, informed us of the results of the last two events that they have had. One was the downtown trick-or-treat, which that event, those sorts of events also could really benefit from volunteers, especially students. But, you know, anybody can come down to that. And then the opening of the, of the street. And I know that the Downtown Pullman Association is working to have more events that are, um, that will attract both students and our community. And so be watching for that. And we will work to get, um, the, the DPA will work to get that information up to campus. Maybe I can ask you later who best to send that to, but, um, so we'll do our best to get it to you. But also, it was made, made mention earlier too about maybe student groups having events downtown. And so I know that a lot of business owners would be amenable to working with student groups. I mean, it's a little challenging in the winter, but there are some spaces. There's also our Gladish Community Center that has a lot of space for events and that's just a couple of blocks up from downtown. So we can work together with our businesses and our spaces to hopefully trade spaces and, and attract more, more activity for everybody.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
So when I was going to WSU, DJ Goldfinger was having his parties and CCN. So, and I know a lot of ASWSU people come, or not ASWSU necessarily, but students come down to Timber. So you can't tell me you don't come down or people don't want to come down. It's just what is it that you want? And I mean, Megan, you know, um, said it pretty, pretty well, what, what is going to bring you down? And I know students come down at, you know, 11, midnight, stay, you know, do those sorts of things. But I mean, yeah, I know, I also know it's a challenge, you know, like, why do I want to go downtown if I have majority of stuff up on campus? And it's kind of one of those things of perspective. Do you want to experience something that is different, is new, you know, than just the college experience? You know, I mean, we're having a tree lighting on December 7th. If anybody's missing holidays or, and are still here, you know, that's always nice. Caroling, you know, marshmallows, the full thing. Downtown has a lot of stuff going on, but, you know, Pullman, and here's the thing, and I know because I've been in your position, Pullman can only go part of the way. You know, putting in scooters, the bus, you know, all of this stuff. And I'm sorry, I've been a little harsh tonight, but that's because I also think y'all can take it. You're leaders. You're the ones people look to. So, you know, the other half has to come from you, has to come from, you know, you set the example. If you're coming down downtown and you want to build things like your Instagram and things like that, and you want to build community, show people, put out an Instagram, you know? I know whenever I go to an event, that's what I do. It helps people to know that you're invested in the community that you've chosen to have as your home for one, two, four years, five years, whatever it is. So we have all of it there, but it also takes you moving to the middle. So, I mean, just keep in mind if you're missing things, you know, we have the food down there, um, we have events, we have things you can do. And like I said, I know you all come down for dancing and for drinks. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Leo Wilson Ramirez here. So my question slash concern was, is brought by numerous students that I've heard from. Has to do with like road maintenance. So the question slash concern is the repairing Northeast Orchard Drive. It's behind the WSU Student Recreation Center. It's, my question is, do you guys have any plans on repairing that anytime soon? Cause I know that the Apartment Land Express bus runs through that road numerous times a day and I know students drive on it and I think some students even avoid it altogether because the road is pretty bad. So, uh, do you guys have any plans on fixing that anytime soon?
So I'm going to bring our Public Works Director up, Sean Wells.
Orchard Drive, uh, the street that is the bane of my existence right now, other than Main Street, no. So Orchard Drive, uh, WSU just completed the sidewalk repairs down there this year. And that included some of the curb ramps as well. Uh, the city contributed a, or is going to contribute $125,000 towards that portion of the project, which was a prior commitment that previous council has engaged with. The street itself is in pretty bad shape. We put some skim patches on it to kind of hold it together and Band-Aid it up to this point. Our engineering team has done a analysis and a design is complete on that. And we're actively seeking grant funding for construction next year. So if we get the funding, we'll send that out to construction and get that road reconstructed. It'll be real similar to how we constructed Bishop Boulevard two years ago and go in and dig out some of those bad rut lane in the areas there and then rebuild the street as we need to. So that's the plan. If we get the funding source, we'll build the street.
So it's, so it's being worked on. And we, we realize it's there, yes.
Hi, I'm Senator Bobb, and I have a more general question for you guys. Are there any events or projects that have yet to be mentioned during this meeting that you'd like to spotlight to us that we should look out for? Big question.
Sorry. I, I think there's a couple. Uh, one is I'd kind of look toward the, one of our WASL teams to see if they'd like to talk about a project they're, they're working on. So either Ann or Tremaine. Tremaine, you lost.
Yeah, so Mayor Benjamin, Councilmember Parks and I was a part of a leadership institute with 48 other local Washington state elected officials to discuss, one, leadership around and two, ways to build bridges, cultivate connection, depolarize our, our communities. And we were tasked with coming up with a, a project. And we decided to look into really the health effects of social isolation and loneliness. And, you know, we tasked ourselves with a, a pretty high and lofty and ambitious goal, but we want to eradicate social isolation and loneliness, you know, in Pullman. And, you know, when we look at the effects of the, you, the serious effects of loneliness and social, social isolation, uh, the CDC has, um, put out a report that showed that loneliness is equivalent to smoking a pack of cigarettes a day. There's serious health effects. One in three adults report feeling lonely. One in four adults report not having social or emotional support. So what can we do about that? We want to uncover ways to build connections, to connect the community. And I don't want to get into the, into the weeds with you, but since, since they put me on the spot, I have to. There's, we're disconnected in a large, like, in, for a lot of reasons, you know? Social media, um, we came out of, you know, we came out of COVID, et cetera. And I just want to put something on you all's radar. There's the idea that strong ties, you know, close family members, relatives, um, your best friends, your dear friends, they're the ones that are most beneficial in getting you, um, employment opportunities, uh, et cetera. But there's another theory that's old. It came out in 1973. It's called Strength of Weak Ties Theory. Weak ties, T-I-E-S. And it's, it suggests that infrequent, infrequent arms-length relationships or weak ties are more beneficial for employment opportunities, um, promotions, um, um, social and emotional health. So it's the people that you meet every day, you know, the cashier, the, those folks, you meet them every day, but you rarely talk to them, you rarely say, you rarely say hi to them. How do we cultivate that in our culture, in our community here in Pullman? So we want to start having small conversations to talk about that. And we want to bring community members together with students and all, you know, all of our different, um, all of our major employers, the staff, faculty, everyone, to start having this conversation. How can we strengthen our weak ties? How can we cultivate connection to make sure everyone feels as, as though they at least have emotional and support and, and social support? It's, again, it's a lofty and ambitious goal, but we, we do hope to tap you all and, and get feedback from you and, and utilize your assets. You all have so many assets that could help us up here do our jobs better. So we want to tap into your, to your assets as well. Very, I can sense you all are just a very wise bunch, so we want to do that. And we have a name, but I didn't sign off on it. Hopefully Councilmember Parks don't throw that out there, but they came up with the name.
It's, it's, no, it's, it's, is her?
I don't remember it, but I just want to say the other part of this, what, what it started as is, how can we help people feel a sense of belonging in Pullman? And not only students, but, um, staff members and faculty and everybody in Pullman, maybe they work at Schweitzer, maybe they work in the schools. And because of COVID, primarily, I believe, there has been a real division. People just had to retreat, first of all, and a lot, a lot of us just stayed retreated and we don't get out. And so when we talk about what does Pullman, what can Pullman offer you, somebody asked that, like, what does the community have for us? That go, then I would go back to joining some of our community groups, right? Like getting, having that sense of belonging means getting out there and sort of creating that and, and doing that. So I think that can be really helpful. And, but yeah, we are definitely looking at, because at that, at that event at the chancellor's house, that came up. And we were just working, just starting to work on this, hadn't said a word about it. But somebody said, I just, I can't find my group in Pullman. I can't, I don't know how to find people and activities. And so whether it's faith-based, service-based, or, you know, a book club or whatever it is, that's what we're hoping to help people establish those relationships and, and show the community better how to do that.
So we have, so in addition to that, we haven't talked about any of our, um, different groups that we've created around welcoming or bypass or housing or, um, so are there any of those that you'd like to talk about or, or at least make ASWU aware of? Councilmember Guido? Councilmember Guido?
Yeah, so I head up a housing group that is looking at affordability of housing in Pullman, particularly looking at trying to create more opportunities for homeownership. Part of our strategic planning that we're doing is questioning some assumptions that we have, and some of them, one of the assumptions is that we're, students are going to leave, right? After their four or five years here, that they want to go off to big cities and they want to get jobs somewhere else. But I'm asking, I guess, folks to, to kind of ask yourself if that's what you want to do. If you like the community and getting involved in it, you get more of a chance to see it. But if you spend all your time up on campus and never get involved in some groups, then you're not going to really be able to assess, you know, does it make sense to maybe stay here for a couple of years and try and find a, an entry-level job here? And, you know, get the benefit of less traffic and less stress and, and accessibility issues might be a little bit easier versus, you know, trying to buy a house in Pullman versus trying to buy a house back in Seattle. So just, those are some of the things that we're trying to do, is retain our talent and this incredible asset pool that we have of students, and not just see you guys leave the town.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bodhi again. I am a part of the External Affairs Committee. I want to be mindful of your time, so I'm just going to ask, there's two questions I have in mind. First of all, is, is there a way for us, I know you guys mentioned you guys do host events downtown and other different places in Pullman, where it's like there's food or something like fun that can maybe attract students? Is there a way for us to like stay updated? Or is there like a way that you guys like communicate that?
So we do have a newsletter that goes out that communicates those things. The Chamber also does one too. But what we can work to get, I mean, obviously rather than sending it each one of you, send it to leadership, not leadership, get that pushed out in that way.
Okay. And my second question kind of follows up on that. One of the, like, it's not a problem, but one of the things that need improvement is, again, advertisement and getting our name out there as ASWSU and as the representatives of the student body. And I feel like we're, we're trying our best to like promote that on campus, but I also think it's a great idea since like Pullman is like over like half the population of Pullman are students who live off-campus and on-campus. It would be a great idea to also promote off-campus and like around the city of Pullman. So would it, like, if it's open to you guys for us, maybe in the future to collaborate with ASWSU and host events, not just on campus, but like around the city of Pullman? I think that would be a great way, if that's something that we could possibly look forward in the future.
Great. And in fact, go ahead.
The Chancellor's Office is actually working on a community-based collaborative online calendar that will identify events both on-campus and off-campus. And so my suggestion in that would be to try to get in touch with, her name is Haley James, and she's the Chief of Staff for the Chancellor, and that is one of her projects. And I think that's a good way that we might be able to collaborate to get that information shared back and forth. So just a suggestion on that.
Her name was Haley?
Haley.
Haley James.
James.
Haley James, okay. Thank you.
And then through the Chamber, the Chamber holds our tourism contract, and they have a website that is Visit Pullman, and there is a community calendar within that too, which we're trying to work to get built out so that if you're wondering what is there to do in Pullman, there's actually a community calendar that has that. Tremaine, you'd earlier had your hand up.
Yeah, really briefly. Earlier in the year, we worked on our goals, and one of our long-term priority goals is what we call welcoming, and is to promote the understanding and appreciation of community connections and cultural diversity through neighborhood gatherings, block-and-heel parties, educational forums, cultural events, and community engagement. And Mayor Benjamin is working on a block, I don't think it's too soon to share, right?
No, no, we can get it out.
Mayor Benjamin's working on the block party kit, so heels can have parties and they can know the protocol to close a street. Hopefully get DJ Goldfinger out for that, right?
Certain streets.
Certain, yeah, certain streets, right? But yeah, you know.
Cul-de-sacs.
We're looking, yeah, we're looking at ways to have more cultural events and different events. So once this committee gets up and going, perhaps we can tap you all and figure out some ways we can collaborate.
For sure. Just a little check, where can we get access for the calendar?
So that's visitpullman.org or com? I'm not, it's going to be Visit Pullman, and then I'm not sure if it's a dot org or a dot com.
Okay.
And they're working with Haley as well to make sure that we get all of these events combined into one calendar that can be accessible for everybody. So it's, it's in its beginning stages, but it's, it's come a ways. So that would, that would be the best way to look, I think.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it is dot com.
Thank you.
So the other thing for us that we can do tonight, I think, is we can all take a group photo and push that out. We have social media. You all can push that out, start that thing, you know, that you want to do, and we can start that tonight. And I would say also, if you see any of us at events, and I, I will say for me, I don't mind taking selfies no matter where I am. I can't speak for any of the council members, but, you know, definitely if you see Francis doing a class, just say, I'm taking a selfie with you. But start doing that just one-on-one, you know, saying hi, getting to know us. And, you know, I mean, if we're at WSU, any events, Lentle Fest, whatever, you know, just doors open, you know? We've met you, you've met us, we're not strangers. No stranger danger. Just come and meet us. So, you know, my suggestion.
Councilmember Jaren?
Councilmember Weller beat me to it, but I just want to clarify, it's visit-pullman.com/events, and this is put on by the Chamber. There's also a newsletter that you can sign up to that gives you updates to events that are coming up. So that's one way you can stay in too.
Thank you.
Great. So the last thing that I want to do is, is first of all, ways in which you can also be engaged in our community involved. We do have committees and commissions that we're always looking for community members to serve on. Commissions that we currently have openings, one is Arts Commission, so if you're interested in art, that's something that we do have openings, and if you go to the city's website, you can apply. We also have openings in the Cemetery District, and you might say Cemetery District, but tied to that is we're actually working on a Veterans Memorial that's going to be in one of our cemeteries. And so if that's something that is important to you, that's an opportunity there for service. The, and as Tremaine talked about earlier, with the neighborhood gatherings, that's something where we are very open to coming if you want to do a neighborhood gathering. And what we actually say is, if you're going to do a neighborhood gathering, you can't invite your friends, you can only invite people to live within two to three blocks of where you live, because we want neighbors to connect to neighbors. We don't, we don't need just a bunch of friends coming together. We want people to actually get to meet their neighbors that they might not have met before. And then, then, then a couple of us will come and actually join you in that as an opportunity for you to get to meet your elected officials, really on a one-on-one basis and social, you know, conversations. We'd love to be able to do that. So if there's any of those activities that you're interested, please, please reach out to us and we can get you connected that way. The last thing is that the 2040, as a, as a part of the Chamber, they received a grant in order to do a Heart and Soul, and that is a, the 2040 is a community vision piece. As a city, we set our vision for, for the city and the government side, but that's actually looking at the whole community. And they're getting ready to kick off a new, the Heart and Soul piece, which is to do a new visioning. And so like it's kind of a 2.0, it's been eight, nine years since the last one, and so it's time for that refresh. And one of the things that's really important to them is they want to make sure that on their team is representatives from all the different groups within Pullman. It's very important not, we don't want to have just to hear from one group, we want to hear from as many as possible. And so if that's something, if you're interested in being involved with that, just please reach out to me or reach out to Marie in the Chamber, and we can get you connected into that piece and involved. And that's something that, starting the first of this year, there'll be a number of community events and gatherings in order to hear what are, what do you love about the community, and also what's your hopes, your heart, your aspirations for the community in that way. With that, I'll, back to you.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that concludes everything from us. I just want to thank you all on behalf of ASWSU for taking the time to listen to us and have us here. We really appreciate the collaboration that ASWSU has with City Council. So thank you for answering our questions and for providing us with all of your feedback, and we're excited to see you in the spring at our joint city council meeting then.
And we'd love to come to visit you in the spring too. And we definitely enjoy these opportunities to get together, to hear what's on your mind, also hear your inspiration, vision. If we think about, our transit system actually got started because some students came and said, hey, this is something that we'd like to have. And that's some of that initial impetus and inspiration that then led to the development of our transit system. So if you think in that context, you can definitely have legacy in this community and make a difference in that way. With that, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Let's take a picture.